The battle over bike lanes. Toronto City Council preparing to fight the province's plan to rip out bike lanes to improve traffic congestion. Good afternoon. It's a busy day for councillors at City Hall with a number of big items on the agenda.
Among them is a staff report on what to do about a new provincial bill to restrict bike lanes. CTV's Natalie Johnson is live at City Hall this afternoon with all the details. Natalie?
Hi, Michelle. That's right, we're waiting to see what exactly city staff recommend on this one, including what the city's legal options might be. Premier Doug Ford is planning to use provincial legislation to rip out municipal bike lanes of his choosing. He has specifically highlighted the ones on Young, Blor and University in Toronto. Toronto City Hall is sure feeling big-footed on this one, and there is a motion in front of council to stand up for the decision-making authority of council and city staff. The mayor alleging that the provincial bill seeks to overturn the decisions of the municipality at significant cost to the taxpayer and undo another government's work. Here is more from the mayor and some councillors this morning.
Local folks in Toronto and the Toronto government duly elected, they serve respect and work with us. Together, we are always stronger. Let's collaborate. Let's look at ways that we could improve. But just ripping everything out, it's not safe for cyclists, it's costly, and during the time when you're ripping things out and repaving the roads, you're going to cause a lot more congestion.
I'm looking forward to a strong recommendation from the mayor that we fight back and we say, this is not okay. This is overstepping local democracy. We have a role in the city of Toronto, and within that mandate certainly is to deliver on safe infrastructure for everybody.
Local government should be making decisions about what's happening on local streets. And so, you know, it's a big overreach from the province, but I think we've been rolled because there's been such a lack of leadership. These are conversations that should have been taken place. The mayor has the biggest bully pulpit of anyone in the country on these issues. She's been largely mute. And here we are today with, you know, what will be a performative motion that's going to go straight into the shredder at Queen's Park.
The mayor said this morning that she has not yet spoken directly to the premier on this issue, though she doesn't tend to have a more detailed conversation with the transportation minister. Again, we are waiting on that advice from the city staff that could come this afternoon that would provide more insight on exactly what, if anything, the city could do to fight Queen's Park. Reporting live in the chamber, I'm Natalie Johnson. Michelle, over to you.
Thank you, Natalie. A tentative deal has been reached between the city of Brampton and the union representing more than 1,000 of its workers.
The mayor and other city councillors responding to the end of the strike today. CTV's Sean Leethong is live at Brampton City Hall with the latest. Sean?
Well, Nathan and Michelle, the mayor and city council here are obviously happy that the strike has reached a tentative deal. QP Local 831 announcing they'd reached that tentative deal last night. That will bring some 1,200 municipal workers off the picket lines. Some of the particulars of that deal is that's a three-year raise over three years. It's just a three-year deal. They had previously come off a five-year deal. And while the picketing has stopped, the workers will not go back to work until the deal itself has actually been ratified. We know that the ratification votes are being held this Friday, November 15th, so there still are a couple of days. But as we know, over the past week or so, with the workers having gone off the job last Thursday, they were disrupting some other work sites that were supposed to be in at work, and that specifically being Brampton Transit, as they were stopping the entire transit system within the city particularly last Friday, and then on a little bit more of a modified schedule throughout the weekend. We caught up with Brampton Mayor Patrick Brown a little while ago to talk about the deal, and here's what he had to say.
You know, for me, I was insistent that we need to be consistent with other municipalities, and it's why the city put forward an offer of 3.33, which is 3% increases each year to match the recent Mississauga QP agreement, and that's what we settled on last night. End of the day, I think we have incredible employees, and I wish I could pay them unlimited amounts, but I work for residents and taxpayers, and I have to be frugal with every dollar that is spent. And I know a lot of residents are really struggling with an affordability crisis right now in Canada, and so I was very cautious that we didn't put any undue burden on their property taxes.
Now, we know that the workers had been looking for a little bit of a higher pay rate somewhere in the area of north of 4% to 4.5%, so I'm hoping to speak with the union leadership this afternoon to find out what some of the finer details are and what the brought them over the edge. Reporting live, I'm Sean Leethong. Michelle, send it back to you.
Thank you, Sean. Still ahead with only 39 days before Christmas, mail delivery could be disrupted if there is no deal between Canada Post and its union by Friday morning. More on that a little later in the newscast.
Just one more day until Taylor Swift's first sold-out show in Toronto. The era's tour officially kicks off tomorrow night at Rogers Centre. Over the next 10 days, hundreds of thousands of Swifties will descend on the city to take in six concerts. Based on previous shows, Swift is expected to sing more than 40 songs over three and a half hours each night. Gracie Abrams will be the opening act for the entire Toronto run. Swift has played 140 shows spanning five continents since the tour kicked off in March last year.
The giant Christmas tree in the distillery district will be lit tonight to kick off the holiday season. The 55-foot silver spruce tree comes from a farm in the Orangeville area, and for the past two weeks, crews have been hard at work decorating it. The lighting ceremony begins at 6:00. The distillery Windsor Village is on until January 5th and is only closed on Christmas Day.
And we have more news in a moment, but first, here's a live look at the city this afternoon. It's cloudy and cool, definitely jacket weather, depending on how long you might be outside. A hat and gloves, also a good idea. Tomorrow, of course, the big concert. What can we expect? Jessica Smith is here with a look at the current conditions. Hey, Jess.
Hey, a lot of folks coming to town to take in Taylor, and it is going to be a really good day, albeit a windy one, and that starts today. A little cloud cover right now, but we'll see peaks of sunshine into the afternoon, but those gusts out of the southeast upwards of 50 kilometers an hour throughout the day today, overnight, and into the day tomorrow. We are on the cooler side, definitely chilly this morning if you were up early on. The winter coat, probably a good idea, but we do warm up to a very seasonal daytime high today and into the day tomorrow. We are looking right now through Pearson and the islands between about 6 and 5 degrees, but it's the wind that really is the bigger issue. All eyes on the sky tomorrow. We are watching for active weather, but it is not a wash of a day. Coming up, I'll break down the timing of Taylor and the weather, but right now, something's back over to Nathan and Michelle.
Thank you, Jess. A teenage boy is in hospital after a stabbing last night.
It's unclear where the violence broke out, but the police investigation has focused on an area near a bank parking lot in Mississauga. CTV's John Musselman is live with more. John?
Well, Michelle, I can update you that the teenager is now listed in stable condition. We'll just show you some video from last night. Peel Regional Police were called to this bank parking lot just after 7:00 last night. The information they received when they got here was that a teenager had suffered a stab wound in the parking lot. Now, he was rushed to a trauma center in critical condition, but the update today is that he has now been upgraded to stable condition. As far as motive, we don't know. Suspects are still outstanding. Peel Regional Police are appealing for help. Here's what one witness had to tell us last night.
Along the way, my brother stopped, so I stopped to kind of see what he's looking at, and by this white van, there was like four people kind of having a whole argument. And I jokingly said, he probably got stabbed because it was like he would keep pressure on it, stuff like that, and I was like, I didn't know exactly what was going on, and I just assumed so, and then walking back now, we saw the police lights.
Now, everything is back to normal here in the bank parking lot. Anyone with information is asked to call Peel Regional Police or Crime Stoppers. Reporting live at the scene, I'm John Musselman. I'll send it back to you. Thank you, John. A woman now accused of committing three murders over three days in three Ontario cities, including Toronto, had a history of attacking strangers. CTV's Krista Simpson has more on the alleged serial killers past.
I was traveling from work from Uptown Waterloo.
In April 2018, Joshua Duma was riding the bus when he encountered Sabrina Calder.
I was assaulted, threatened, and eventually attacked by her.
Duma says Calder, a stranger, came up to him and flipped the phone out of his hand and made a threat, then went back to her seat.
Things escalated, and she started assaulting other passengers.
Calder dumped her drink on another passenger. When another woman spoke up, Calder struck her.
Then I tried to intervene, and then I was assaulted.
Duma says Calder punched him. She got off the bus, and passengers called police. Calder was eventually arrested. Court was told police identified her by the distinctive triangle tattoo between her eyebrows.
And that wasn't the only incident involving Calder on a Grand River Transit bus. Court heard that earlier that same day, she had tried to steal an iPhone from somebody riding the bus with friends in Kitchener.
According to the details presented in court, which Calder did not dispute, Calder got off the bus with the stolen phone in the area of Grand River Hospital. A friend of the person who had the phone stolen followed, touching Calder's arm and asking if they could talk. Calder told the woman not to do that again, or she'd murder her. The phone was later found in a trash can. The following month, Calder pleaded guilty in court to uttering a death threat and two counts of assault. Court also heard Calder was already on probation for assault-related offenses in the Arilia area. The Crown recommended a sentence of 15 days minus pre-sentence custody, followed by a period of probation. The judge that day said he'd accept the recommendation, but told Calder while delivering the sentence, "I don't know what's going on here, but it seems bizarre behavior, and it's behavior that's going to get you in custody for a lot more than 15 days."
The whole incident was bizarre, and it was generally, it was really unexpected. You know, on the bus, you meet all sorts of types of people, but you don't really expect for anything really to happen until it does.
Calder is now accused of three murders that took place in three days in three different cities. Investigators believe she knew her first victim, who was found dead in a West Toronto home on October 1st, but it's believed she randomly attacked Lance Cunningham of Niagara Falls and Mario Bilic in Hamilton in the following days.
She did threaten to kill me on the bus. I don't know if she would fall through with those threats.
Duma says his encounter with Calder didn't seem like a big deal at the time, but after learning of the new charges Calder faces...
I think that, you know, I am actually pretty lucky that it's just an assault.
Krista Simpson, CTV News, Kitchener.
One of India's most wanted terrorists has been arrested and charged in connection with a recent shooting near Toronto. This case comes during a deepening diplomatic rift between Canada and India. CTV's Adrian Gobriel has this exclusive story.
Ashdeep Singh Gill is known on the streets of India by the alias Arsh Dala, a name that in recent years has become synonymous with deadly acts of violence.
A very prominent player as far as the organized crime circuit works in the North Indian state of Punjab.
Dala has lived in Canada for a number of years. He's also a known associate of Har Deep Nijer, the now-dead, sick activist who the Trudeau government believes was killed in British Columbia by agents of the Indian government. In late October, police in Halton, Ontario posted this press release stating that two men involved in a shooting in Milton, Ontario had been charged with discharging a firearm with intent. While the release neglected to share the names of those involved, our investigation uncovered that Dala is one of the two people who've been charged.
But in certain cases, there are certain gangsters who have been designated as terrorists, and Arsh Dala happens to be one of them.
In January of 2023, the Indian government put out this notification proclaiming the 28-year-old a terrorist. Dala is accused of ordering killings in India while in Canada. He's also publicly claimed responsibility for multiple murders, including a targeted hit on a local politician in Punjab, even admitting his role in the murder to Ritesh Lakhie, a well-connected independent journalist in India.
He would simply call me up, and you know, I did a few interviews with him, and he would, you know, tell me that why he killed this person and why he would not do that. So we have been, you know, watching his activities for the last good three, three and a half years.
In March, the news publication India Express shared this story claiming that the Indian government shared Dala's coordinates with Canadian officials requesting his arrest.
If Canada does not take action that India feels is necessary, there are voices in India that would say, we have no choice. Canada has ignored our requests. This is a dangerous individual. We have to take care of him ourselves.
CTV News reached out to CSIS, who referred us to the RCMP, who then referred us to the federal government. Our questions to Canada's Minister of Foreign Affairs Office have yet to be answered.
Tonight, we can confirm that Dala is still being held in custody, and he'll be appearing here at the Superior Court in Milton, Ontario.
Adrian Gobriel, CTV News.
Food insecurity is a growing concern in many cities as food banks report a surge in demand.
Mississauga's mayor and city council are set to address the issue later today at a news conference. CTV's Rahim Ladani is live in Mississauga with more. Rahim?
Nathan and Michelle, good afternoon. Food insecurity continues to be a growing issue across the GTA, and the city of Mississauga is not immune to this. This afternoon, as you mentioned, we are going to be hearing from Mississauga Mayor Carolyn Parrish about the growing demand that her city is facing. Carolyn Parrish has said that she wants sustainable funding to be made a priority. We did take a look at some of the numbers, and these were released by Food Banks Mississauga. It says that from last year to May of this year, 1 in 13 residents were using food banks, and nearly 16,000 of the visitors were children. This morning, we've been getting reaction to the increased demand. Take a listen.
I work at a grocery store, so I see it all the time. I see how people struggle and how they have to use like food vouchers and things like that, so it gets really not as surprising as some people might see.
Actually, I'm new to the country, so it's a new concept for me that I learned here recently. Yeah, but it's very sad, though, to see so many people are going to the food banks.
We'll be hearing from Mayor Parrish at 2:30 this afternoon, where she's expected to call on all levels of government to increase both resources and funding to address the current need. Reporting live, I'm Rahim Ladani. Michelle, I'll send it back to you.
Thank you, Rahim. The pressure is now on for Canada Post and the Canadian Union of Postal Workers to strike a deal by Friday as the busy holiday season approaches.
We're trying to get a fair wage. We're trying to improve health and safety issues. We're trying to ensure that we can retire with dignity with our pensions.
Canada Post issued a 72-hour lockout notice in response to a strike notice by the union. Canada Post says operations are normal for now, but warned customers may face some delays if there's no agreement. In the next two days, the union could begin rotating strikes as of 12:01 a.m. Eastern Time on Friday. Let's bring in CTV's Scott Hurst to unpack more of this, bring us up to speed on where things stand now. Obviously, the timing of this potential labor unrest is troublesome because we're getting into prime time for mail delivery.
It is the busy season when it comes to online shopping with Black Friday and the holiday season fast approaching, and this Friday deadline is looming large, not just over the contract negotiations, which are now nearing the one-year mark, but also for many Canadians and Canadian businesses wondering how service disruptions might affect their livelihoods or their business. And so, I can add to a little bit more in terms of the union demands. Here's what we know. The union says it's bargaining for fair wages, wage increases, improved staffing provisions, and some upgrades to its benefit plans. The management says the union's demands are unrealistic considering how Canada Post says it's falling behind in the parcel delivery market, and the corporation needs to make some significant changes to be more competitive. Canada Post's latest contract offer included annual wage increases that amount to 11.5% over four years amongst some other things related to pension and benefits. The union recently overwhelmingly rejected the proposal, and so this Friday deadline now looming large over the contract talks, and we heard from the union that a lot is riding, Michelle, on this week, depending on what happens this week at the bargaining table, and so that might affect what Friday will look like in terms of specific service disruptions, how significant they may be for Canadians and Canadian businesses, Michelle.
Well, we're waiting to see if they can reach a deal, but it does help to look ahead in the case that they can't, and there's strike action. I know people have plans to mail packages. What might we expect in terms of disruption? What should people know?
A lot of businesses are trying to figure that out themselves because, of course, a lot of businesses still rely on Canada Post, maybe not as significant as it was maybe 15, 10, 15, 20 years ago, but you know, a lot of businesses are now forming contingency plans to try to figure out what they might have to do coming Friday. Here's more from some businesses across the country that still rely on Canada Post and are trying to figure out how it might impact them coming up.
People are starting to say, well, we want it, you know, we want that hard copy, but if Canada Post can't deliver us that hard copy, I guess we'll take the next best thing.
It'll definitely have a big impact on our business. We do send a fair bit out of town. Our website is fairly active. We do a bunch of stuff on eBay as well, so anything like this will definitely have a huge impact on what we do for Christmas.
Michelle, the federal government also watching this closely, keeping a close eye and keeping close tabs on the latest in negotiations, but we heard from the Labor Minister yesterday saying there are no plans right now for the federal government to step into the middle of negotiations.
CTV's Scott Hurst live for us in the CTV National Newsroom today. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Israel is rejecting an accusation by eight international aid groups, including Oxfam and Save the Children. They say Israel has failed to meet U.S. demands to improve the humanitarian situation in the Gaza Strip. Washington gave the Israelis until yesterday to implement a list of demands or face a potential halt to American military support. U.S. officials say Israel has made progress. The Israelis insist aid groups did not coordinate with its military or get information from it before filing their report. Global food security experts say there's a strong likelihood famine is imminent in parts of northern Gaza, which has also been rejected by Israel.
Donald Trump returned to Washington today for the first time since his election victory, and this morning, he met with U.S. President Joe Biden in the Oval Office as the transition process begins.
Mr. President-elect and former president, Donald, congratulations.
Thank you.
And looking forward to having, like we said, a smooth transition. Do everything we can to make sure you're accommodated, what you need, and we're going to get a chance to talk about some of that today. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and politics is tough, and it's, in many cases, not a very nice world, but it is a nice world today, and I appreciate it very much. A transition that's so smooth, it'll be as smooth as it can get, and I very much appreciate that, Joe.
You're welcome.
Following this photo opportunity, the two men held a private meeting. Biden insists he will do everything he can to make the transition to the new administration go smoothly, that is, despite decrying Trump as a threat to democracy and the nation's core values. The president has since abandoned his dire warning, saying last week, "The American experiment endures. We're going to be okay." And earlier, the U.S. president-elect met with House Republicans as the GOP is poised to retain control of the lower chamber in Congress. The Republican House Speaker says the party is ready to deliver on Trump's America-first agenda. It's unclear if he will also visit the Senate. Republicans have already flipped the upper chamber and will have a majority there. Within the last hour, Republican John Thune was elected to serve as Senate Majority Leader for the next two years. He will replace Mitch McConnell, who is stepping aside in January. Jess?
Well, it'll be pretty seasonal today, but it is going to be windy. We're looking at wind gusts upwards of 50 kilometers an hour right throughout the day, so hold on to your hat. The good news is, at least we see a little sunshine as we head in towards the afternoon, so we mark the middle of the week with a little sun and some fairly mild weather. Coming up, I'll have a full look at your long-range forecast, including what we can expect as we step into day one of Taylor Takes Toronto. All that coming up right after the break.
Are you used to the typical November weather yet? Because we've had several days of, you know, it's cool, it's cloudy, it's what you'd expect. Windy, too.
I was holding off for a while, wearing the light jacket, but I've gone to the winter jacket because I'm getting used to this now. You've got to dress for it.
I made the transition this morning. I went out to first walk my dog in like a lighter spring coat with a sweater underneath. That was a mistake. It was very cold. So as we head throughout the rest of the week, we're holding on to fairly seasonal weather, but as they mentioned, because it has been so mild, it feels shocking in comparison, but this really is just where we should be for this time of year. We're watching, though, for the wind to be the bigger issue today and then the chance of rain tomorrow. Weather is brought to you by the Prezler Law Firm. Injury lawyers, you don't pay unless they win. Little hope on the horizon, though. We saw some sunshine early on, and we will see more as we head throughout the afternoon. Not a brilliantly sunny day by any means, but we are going to see a peak of a little bit of high pressure bringing in just a little bit of sunshine, and then we are watching for the wind. It is going to be gusty from start to finish. The good news, it's a fairly mild wind, a more east-southeastally or southeasterly wind, so that will help to keep things from feeling super cold, but those gusts are going to get under your jacket, so just make sure you're prepared accordingly if you're going to spend extra time outside. Today, temperature-wise, it is a little fresher. We're taking longer to warm up throughout the day, but we're sitting at 5 degrees right now, 11 through Windsor, 3 through Ottawa, anywhere kind of north of Muskoka, it's a little cooler to a certain extent, with the exception of Thunder Bay and Sault Ste. Marie. They're sitting on a fairly seasonal part or point at this part of the day. We'll sit at 7:00 today. We are right on par for that seasonal temperature. It's wild because this time last week, we were into the upper teens, low 20s. We're done with that at least for a little while, and we're looking at a very seasonal day ahead, albeit a very, very windy one. This is ahead of the system on its way in. But almost everybody on the positive side of things after just above seasonal, including London, Godrich, in areas over towards Perry Sound. Tonight, we lose almost none of the warmth we built up throughout the day. We'll sit at 6:00. We should be sitting around 1:00 for this time of year, so there is a bit of a kind of silver lining with all of this. We're holding on to relatively mild temperatures right across southern Ontario. The further east you go, it is a little cooler. Bancroft, you're included in that as well as Peterborough, but for the most part, we're on the positive side. All eyes on the sky, not just because it's that transitional time of year, but because there's a lot of folks coming to the city of Toronto to watch the Taylor Swift concert, and you have to line up outside for the most part, depending on what it is you want to do. We're watching that line of showers making its way across the Great Lakes as we head throughout the day today, and timing-wise, we will watch all of this tomorrow. We are going to see the line of showers push through later on in the day on Thursday, so by no means is it a wash, but if you are going to wait outside, a waterproof layer probably a good idea. The rest of our day today, though, not all that bad. A little sunshine before the sun sets this afternoon. The cloud cover pushes in first. The wind does not dissipate at all. We hold on to these gusty southeasterly winds throughout the day today, overnight, and throughout the day tomorrow. We get through our Thursday morning dry, but cloudy here in the city. The rain holds off a little bit further into that southwestern corner. We get through the lunch hour, again, cloudy but dry. As we head in towards that midpoint of our afternoon, that's when the light showers start to push in. We're not looking at a downpour by any means, but the wind will not help when the rain does eventually make its way in. We're looking at spotty showers as we head through to about 7:00, and then as we head through the overnight, a lot of this will push out. So again, it is not a wash of a day, but if you do have plans outside that don't include Taylor Swift, or they do include going to Taylor Swift, just bring that waterproof layer. You're going to need it. Heading into Friday, though, and for the rest of the shows, for the most part, at least throughout this week, it is going to be relatively sunny. As we head throughout the day today, the day tomorrow, we are sitting at the seasonal mark for those daytime highs, but the wind is going to be consistent today and tomorrow. The overnight lows staying quite mild. Back into the double digits as we head through your Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, high pressure pushes back in, lots of sunshine out there. And as we look ahead towards next week, although there is some shower activity likely to linger, again, it is really light in nature, so we are holding on to a fairly comfortable and seasonal fall forecast. Michelle, I'll send things back over to you.
Thank you, Jess.
Thanks.
Well, if you feel a bit spread thin because of rising butter prices, you're not alone. Many consumers have been caught by surprise, and so have police. Here's CTV's Kathy Lee.
Do you have the doubt of a choice they can all return?
Every treat is a masterpiece, but the cost to make these baked goodies isn't so sweet thanks to the high price of butter almost doubling per pound in a year.
Right now, it is over almost $6. It is affecting the business.
And businesses that heavily rely on butter aren't the only ones being squeezed. The average family, spread thin, too.
Absolutely. The butter price has gone up, and I'm a little bit more careful about which butter I buy for baking.
Whatever it's for, the reason butter is churning up in cost, the price hike in butter fat used to make the creamy commodity.
Prices have increased by anywhere between 40% to 50%.
That price increase, not just melting wallets at the store, it's potentially motivated criminal activity. Parts of Ontario seeing a rash in butter thefts with hundreds of thousands of dollars worth stolen.
There must be a market for it, you know, somewhere on the black market. I know if you go on some of the online marketplaces, for example, you can't actually find butter for sale.
My guess is that right now in the black market, you can actually find butter at $3 a pound.
This baker isn't surprised by illicit butter sales, saying, "These are desperate times." And as for her shop...
I just opened one year ago. I cannot adjust the prices right away, but I cannot absorb the prices as well because it will limit my growth. I'm just hoping the best for the bakery.
The Canadian Dairy Commission sets the price of butter and recently issued its recommendation for next year, suggesting an increase of 0.02%, which means the cost of butter will rise, but minimally. Kathy Lee, CTV News, Calgary.
Coming up, combating the rising number of deaths and addictions. New guidelines help those with opioid addiction. A new set of guidelines aims to combat the rising number of opioid deaths and addictions.
We get the details from our health reporter, Pauline Chan.
Spent six figures on pills. I lost everything that meant anything to me to it.
Chris Cull became addicted to opiates after his father became ill and took his own life.
It just broke me as a person, and then I was using opioids to kind of cope because it was the only thing that emotionally kind of leveled me out.
He spent five years on methadone treatment, and a decade ago, there weren't many choices for treatment. Daily pills were later developed, buprenorphine mixed with naloxone. But Cull says the need for daily appointments can be challenging. Then around 2018, Dr. Peter Selby says increased efforts to get treatment to those with opiate use disorder led to the development of new treatments.
One of the newest treatments is an injection that lasts 28 days.
Sublimicate is given as an injection each month.
You can start focusing on things like getting a job and maintaining your relationships.
But despite the new treatments, Dr. Selby says increased availability of fentanyl on the streets is causing opiate addiction to soar.
We've seen this 184% increase in opioid-related deaths over the last seven years, like from, you know, about 2,800 in 2016 to about 8,000 in 2023.
And he says these treatments alone are not the whole solution.
We need to do better in housing, education, meaning, work, all of those things.
Cull, who is now on the constituency council of CAMH and recently addressed the United Nations, says the overall message is one of hope.
At the end of the day, it's just you can come back from the most insurmountable circumstances and turn life into something beautiful.
Pauline Chan, CTV News.
Hundreds of thousands of people are about to descend on Toronto for Taylor Swift's much-anticipated Eras Tour.
And one of those sold-out crowds will be an Ottawa boy with a rare disease who's getting the chance to see Taylor Swift in concert, thanks to the generosity of a complete stranger. CTV's Caitlin Wilson has the story.
We've got to make lots. You've got to trade them.
It's an unexpected twist of fate that led Jack Laylaw and his parents to this moment, sitting around the kitchen table making friendship bracelets.
It has my name, and it has a bunch of different colors.
A staple for Taylor Swift fans to trade at her concert, which is where the Laylaws are heading, getting ready to shake it off in Toronto, thanks to the generosity of a perfect stranger.
To have him have these moments of just excitement and happiness keeps us so uplifted and keeps us going.
Last year, the seven-year-old was diagnosed with SPG4, a rare disease that will eventually leave him paralyzed. The pair of tickets were donated by the daughters of a family friend for an auction to help fund a cure, and that's where the story takes an unexpected turn.
The winning bidder was a $20,000 bid, so we notified them that they won the tickets.
But instead of keeping the tickets, they gave them back.
They wanted the girls to keep the tickets, and then the girls said that they wanted Jack to go.
It's so crazy, the turn of events that happen here. And yeah, Jack's going to see Taylor Swift.
Yeah.
But that's not all. An anonymous donor also matched the winning bid for a total of $40,000, helping the family towards their goal of raising $3 million U.S. to help a team of researchers south of the border find a cure.
He's always so positive, so it's just, it's just been really, just really overwhelming to have this show of support for our family.
And with signs and bracelets in tow and no time to waste, there's just one thing left to ask.
Is there any song that you're looking forward to hearing?
Fortnite.
Caitlin Wilson, CTV News.
It's an annual celebration of music, but the organizers of Canadian Music Week say they're expanding their scope.
Music, along with art, comedy, and technology, will all be part of future festivals. CTV's Andrea Case explains.
Canadian Music Week. Brings the world together.
For more than four decades, Canadian Music Week has invited those in the industry across the country and around the world to Toronto. A new name and a new direction were announced.
Today, we're excited to unveil a new brand, a new reimagined vision.
Canadian Music Week is now called Departure. At Hotel X, the new home of the annual event, its new owners, Loft Entertainment Group and Oakview Group, spoke about the changes.
Everything is evolving, and we need a digital strategy. We need to bring tech into music. We need to modernize the business. So Departure, which is our new name, is Canadian Music Week 2.0. After 42 years, the foundation's built, and off we go.
I think the biggest part is that, you know, you've had a brand that had existed for 42 years and had built on some great legacy, but we kind of felt like we wanted to take it to a different stage, and we wanted to be inclusive of different arts, and we imagined the idea of what festival means today.
Comedy is one of the new streams of the week's events, and who better to join the announcement than comedian Russell Peters?
Why is the comedy scene so important to the arts in Canada?
Because Canada inherently, according to some of the people in the governmental arts industry, don't consider stand-up comedy as an art. And I'm like, is that because we tell the truth and the industry's afraid of it? Everywhere is afraid of the truth?
Musicologist Alan Cross says the changes are welcomed.
I love the name Departure, and I love the idea that it's spreading out just from the couple of streams that we've been enjoying and learning from for the past couple of years. Media has changed, music has changed, the industry has changed, and it's nice to see something grander.
Organizers say with Departure, they're going to take some big swings. In addition to music, there'll be art, comedy, tech, and culinary arts. Departure takes place right here at Hotel X from May 6th to the 11th, 2025. Andrea Case, CTV News.
Actor John Krasinski has been named People Magazine's Sexiest Man Alive for 2024. The publication shared a photo of the 45-year-old on its new cover on social media. Krasinski is best known for starring as Jim Halpert in The Office for nine seasons. He also directed and starred in the 2018 film A Quiet Place alongside his wife, Emily Blunt, before landing the lead role in the action series Jack Ryan.
Zero thoughts, other than maybe I'm being punked. And then after that, it was just, yeah, it was a false reality. That's not how I wake up usually thinking, is this the day that I'll be asked to be Sexiest Man Alive? And yet, it was the day. You guys did it. You guys really raised the bar for me.
Previous winners include Patrick Dempsey, Idris Elba, Paul Rudd, and Michael B. Jordan.
Still to come on CTV News at Noon, the Canadian dollar hit a four-year low today. Details and the rest of your business headlines when we return.
Get Toronto's top stories, breaking news alerts, and watch live. Download the CTV News app.
The Canadian dollar sagged again this morning.
Andrew Bell of BNN Bloomberg brings us the latest in business.
Hello there. Here are your business headlines. The Canadian dollar hit a fresh four-year low today against the U.S. dollar, trading at about 71.55 U.S. cents. The U.S. currency has been climbing since Donald Trump's election victory last week. His policies are seen slowing interest rate cuts, and that's usually positive for a currency. Shares at Suncor jumped 3%. Desjardins calls the company's latest results a, quote, "blockbuster," highlighted by a massive production and cash flow beat. The company says that after meeting its $8 billion net debt target, it's speeding up capital returns to shareholders. And finally, Amazon, challenged by Asian discount sellers such as Temu and Shein, is fighting back with a low-cost online storefront. On the Amazon site, called Haul, purchases are delivered in one to two weeks, and shipping fees are waived for orders larger than $25 U.S. That's the latest in business. I'm Andrew Bell of BNN Bloomberg.
As the temperature drops, many people will be switching over to winter tires. A new survey shows they're used by almost four out of five Canadian drivers.
The benefits of winter tires are well-known, and they're now mandatory in Quebec and parts of B.C., but they are an added expense. CTV's Pat Foran has this consumer alert.
At Green Car Tires in Scarborough, it's starting to get busy as drivers bring in vehicles to switch from all-season to winter tires. But Corey Stokes says organized chaos will begin with the first snowfall.
Once they start slip-sliding a little bit, I see the snow coming down, everybody rushes in to get their tires changed.
A survey by the Tire and Rubber Association of Canada finds that winter tire usage has now risen to 78%. More drivers understand the benefits of winter tires, including shorter stopping distances on snow and ice.
80% of those who use winter tires say that winter tires have saved them from potentially hazardous situations, and people do understand that winter tires are the best option.
There's been a 10% increase in the number of Canadians using winter tires over the past eight years, but there are still some drivers who feel they're too expensive. They don't want to change them in the spring and fall, and they have nowhere to store them. Despite the added cost and hassle, tire manufacturers and dealers say the expense is worth it.
You need to be able to react to the conditions and the other drivers on the road, and tires are less expensive than vehicle repairs and the safety of your family.
One way to save money is to buy all-weather tires. They're a hybrid which combines the attributes of all-season and winter tires into one tire. All-weather tires can be left on your car all year long and still qualify for the winter tire insurance discount. Stokes says they're a growing part of his business.
They don't have to switch back and forth. Saves a lot of money and getting an extra set of rims and tires and a lot of time at the tire shop.
Consumer Reports also recently tested all-weather tires and found they're a good option.
In our testing, they absolutely work. They are not as superior as a winter tire in no conditions, but they are definitely better than all-seasons and just a notch below winter tires.
Whatever tires you use, now is also a good time to check their tread depth and air pressure to get ready for another season of winter driving. Pat Foran, CTV News.
The Maple Leafs were looking for a fourth straight win when they faced off against the Ottawa Senators last night.
By Shabat, back down to Batherson, centers it, and shoot scores! Batherson to Stuthston to the back of the net, and Ottawa takes a 2-0 lead.
Ottawa scored twice in the second period to take a 3-0 lead, and that would end up being the final score. The Leafs will be back on the ice tonight to face the Washington Capitals. Puck drop is set for just after 7:30.
It's next level when you guard somebody like Janes.
RJ, jumper, good.
Big make for him.
Meanwhile, the Raptors were looking to avoid a fifth straight loss when they took on the Milwaukee Bucks last night. Milwaukee grabbed an early lead and held off the Raptors for a 99-85 win. Toronto will be back on the court Friday to play the Detroit Pistons.
As Toronto gets ready to welcome Taylor Swift, our women's professional hockey team has revealed a special tribute to the pop superstar.
Grand unveiling of the Toronto Scepters jersey. But for Taylor Swift, and honestly, I should put it on. Gracie Abrams. They're looking great. They're going to look great in this. Hey, Taylor and Gracie. The Scepters just want to welcome you to Toronto with our first-ever custom jerseys. We hope to see you rep them for the new era of Toronto hockey.
They are the first custom jerseys in the short history of the Toronto Scepters. In addition to number 13 for Swift, the team has produced number 24, hockey sweater for opening act Gracie Abrams. The Scepters kick off their regular season on November 30th when they host Boston.
Coming up, a major milestone for a local pizza place on the Danforth. More on how the community is celebrating after this short break. A pizzeria on the Danforth is marking 60 years of serving up slices.
Ownership may have changed, but the recipes have remained the same, along with the community's love for the local establishment. CTV's Beth McTinnell has the story.
Surrounded by members of the community, the Monique's family is celebrating 60 years of pizza history. Since 1964, the Danforth Pizza House has been serving slices to the masses.
It's people appreciating what you do. We see that every day when we make pizzas and give pizzas, but today it's special. You know, you see the love.
It's one of the last vestiges of the Danforth's old Little Italy. Rocco Zambri was a teenager when it opened. He purchased the first pizza and took the first bite once again during the restaurant's festivities.
Beautiful pizza then, and beautiful pizza today.
Over these 60 years, the Monique's family says the recipe hasn't changed. Same dough, same sauce, same great taste. What has changed is who is making the pizzas. The original owner, Angelo Doria, passed away, but 10 years ago, the Monique's family, area regulars themselves, took over the business and now run it with the help of their two sons.
We've had customers who came here as couples and got married, and now they have kids, and they bring their kids in. And because the place has been here for 60 years, you get whole generations, right? Customers coming in with their great-grandkids, so that's, that's very nice.
This pizza party was organized by area city councillor Paula Fletcher, a party that saw Danforth Pizza House get inducted into Toronto's Pizza Hall of Fame.
It feels good. It was quite the challenge at the beginning because the bar was set so high, so I had to make sure that we reached that level.
A level of pizza-making the Monique's family and the community are proud to celebrate. Beth McTinnell, CTV News.
I'm sure a lot of Swifties have already landed, dressed warmly.
Oh, it's coming. So yeah, a little bit rainy for day one, but there's six shows.
There are, and I mean, obviously tomorrow is a really big day. It's the first of the Taylor Takes Toronto kind of saga, but it is going to be relatively seasonal. It's just super windy outside. We are watching for the chance of rain throughout the afternoon. It is not a wash of a day tomorrow, but a good idea if you're lining up early to bring at least some waterproof gear. Some cloud cover lingers out there, but we'll see peaks of sunshine on and off throughout the day. But those wind gusts stay consistent today and into the day tomorrow. We're 5 degrees here in the city, 11 through Windsor, 3 in Ottawa, and overall, it's quite mild. Right now, we're looking at a fairly dry start to the day. The chance of showers into the afternoon, into the evening is when it increases. So the bulk of the travel time for the Swifties out there will be not too bad, and we're holding on to a fairly seasonal day. We're looking at a daytime hot again around 7, 8 degrees into the day tomorrow, and then we get into Friday, Saturday, Sunday, into the double digits, and it's honestly not too bad. I'll take it. I'm sure Taylor will enjoy it, too.